Morning everybody, we're gonna start a meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Somebody to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington's one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockingham County Commissioner's meeting June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'm gonna start up your dependents in Zoom. We have our superintendent Henry. We have Jason Smith, we have Pat Conway, we have two kids, Alfred Mann. And then here, we have Casey, we have Major Basra, we have I- I Sheriff Sales. We have Deputy Chief Sawyer, Allison Kowalski, we have Leila. You should, like, do a boil myself. So, morning, everybody. Want to start with our P openings? Anti-narcotics detection device.
And we've authorized the High Sheriff to review about proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second, they're motioning to make it seconded. I actually have some discussion here. I think we should probably table this for now. I don't know if all the bits had come in. Sure they have, but I stated that I was a little uneasy with discussion with what one of the manufacturers, uh, one of the commissioners. So I don't think it's appropriate right now that we that we open these right now. We we should send it back and then
Do you think the
That's ridiculous.
So, a couple of things. I, I do have some somewhat concerns based on an email that was sent. I, my thought is the proper remedy is to open to in terms of procedurally that we open, we reject, and then put it back out. I think that mechanically, but I, I don't have a strong preference.
What's the problem?
Uh, because I talked to the manufacturer's rep to get some information on the, on the, uh, on the device.
Well, you also mentioned you were getting favorable pricing.
Only that there was an opportunity for us to, uh, that they were offering favorable price pricing. It wasn't anything I negotiated. This was simply because, uh, it was a brand new release. If, if we are buying it directly from the manufacturer instead of going through one of their distributors. So we avoid the distributor markup, and that's because they had already met with the Sheriff's Department and discussed that and gave them that opportunity. Yeah. So I wanted to make sure that if we were gonna go into two, that we got the opportunity to get two at a similar price. Plus, I was very interested in learning about the device. And I did.
My, my, my concern is that, and you know, that was I received forwarded that I, that says specifically, and this was uh, sent last Thursday. I was meeting with Commissioner Gurdue yesterday, and he mentioned you would be receiving one of the two that they were already that, that information from this email represents that you were going, that you said we were buying them from. There's information in this email that suggests that you had committed to buying those, that we'd be receiving.
I did not commit.
Listen, I'm not, I'm not making an assertion that you did or didn't, but what I see, and I wasn't, I didn't participate in your conversation, so I'm not making any assertion about what you did or didn't. But the perception based on this email and out to the public is that there was a commitment to order from this individual vendor based on your conversation. Now, could he have interpreted it differently than what you represented? Absolutely. I'm not, there's no, I'm not, this is not a accusation. This is we have this issue. To me, the remedy is, because at the very least, it gives the appearance of impropriety, and to me, the remedy is we, we open properly. They can review. The Sheriff's Department will make a recommendation. It will like, I don't, depending on what, maybe it's gonna be a moot issue because this isn't the best vendor to go with, but more likely than not, the proper remedy because of any appearance of impropriety is to reject and then go back to putting it out to bid. That's how, I think, how I see it, but, um, and it's, again, it's entirely an issue of generally transparency and making sure we don't have the appearance of impropriety to the public. That could set us up for liability if we do have that appearance of impropriety.
Yeah, so I mean, so the way I kind of do these RFP things is I've never called anybody RFP because I want to be completely away from that. If I have questions on it, I'm gonna ask the department head to get to those questions. But a direct contact from a commissioner, I'm not saying right or wrong, but direct contact from a commissioner is, in my, in my opinion, and we'll dive into this a little bit later, um, I just, I just don't think that that's proper. Um, and just gonna chalk it up to maybe a learning curve, but in the meantime, I have to do what I feel is best. I, I just think that we need to kind of clean that part of it up. We saw this happen with the paint issue with long-term care as well, and it caused, it causes a lot of problems. So yeah, learning curves, but I just think we need to kind of clean it up. So that's where I'm coming from. I mean, there is a motion on the floor.
Would it be appropriate for me to chime in? Just as the point of content, Sheriff, do you mind if I jump in?
Okay.
Um, so, obviously, we, obviously, we, we know we want this piece, you know, a piece of equipment that does this function. I understand there's, it seems like this muddy waters, and so if, if, if it appears that the flavor of the board is going to be that they should, no matter what the recommendation we come back with, that it'd be more appropriate to go into RFP. Would the board be comfortable if, after you make the motion to have the sheriff make a recommendation, could we on the floor have the sheriff make a recommendation to reject the bid to go out to RFP and resubmit to RFP today so that we could get that process moving forward faster? Or would it be, would it, would the board's wish still be that we come back with a recommendation at the next meeting? We understand that you, you know, there's some concerns about issues, and obviously, there are limited vendors that make these items, so we can't, we can't just wash a vendor uh, from, you know, future contention, but we would just like, if we're gonna restart the process again, we just wanna have the ability to start it sooner than later if, if needed.
Yeah.
I just
I think either way, it'll work. You wanna give me a spark, let's give the commission, Commissioner, we wanna do. We do have, we do have a motion for, right now, authorize the sheriff to review, evaluate, and return with recommendations. So all we can do, as Commissioner Foyle mentioned, he can recommend, the sheriff can recommend that. He doesn't vote with this, we repost. That's a recommendation. That way, well, we just, we just do it as commissioners, you know, it's the same thing.
I think what we should do for now with respect to this opening is move to table, um, this right now, and, um, you know, I think this is a opportunity for a legal, we might need a legal opinion on how best to proceed mechanically speaking, that we should move to table this and table it until, table the opening till next week, and then we'll have a direction on whether we should, whether we should open and review and then address the issue of whether we can accept or reject, or we should move to, um, not even open.
Yeah, we, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, because I just wanna make it clean and
There is a motion on the floor, and a subtle, so do you
Draw my motion and I'll move to table the, um, opening of the, the detection device.
Right, so motion to table is a higher priority, so it's non-debatable. So on the motion to table, Commissioner Foyle?
Well, I think we have to second it.
On the motion to table, yeah, I thought I seconded you. Sorry, I lost second. So, on the motion to table, Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
I will, yes. So we look at it off and on, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
That's fine. Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so let's go on to VMware Engineering Maintenance IT Services.
I moved to award the proposal for VMware to State Tech Inc. for an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred as recommended by the IT manager and senior director, so he's planning an IT.
Second, motion been made, seconded, any discussion? Uh, motion, Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Uh, award for painting kitchen, LTC facility.
I moved to award the proposal for painting kitchen LTC facility to CK Landmark Construction Corporation for a amount not to exceed eighteen thousand five hundred dollars as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Motion been made, we're here.
Second.
Second, uh, any discussion? Well, I have said, what discussion? Uh, and I don't know, this is, there's only one vendor that can, correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, and is this vendor the one that?
Yeah.
It's a different vendor.
It's a totally new vendor.
Totally new vendor, so, okay, that's all I wanna know. So on the, on the motion, Commissioner Gurdue? Yes.
Yes.
All right, we're onto consent agenda.
I move to approve the June eighth, twenty twenty-three public and non-public meeting minutes.
Motion been made, what's your second?
Second.
Any additions, detractions? Bring none on the motion, Commissioner, budget.
Yes.
Yes.
Surplus equipment request?
And move to approve the surplus request, first, no, it's a, um, twenty-eight, eight, A, there are six stand-up lengths surplus for the items to be discarded.
Motion been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, with any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
I vote yes. Hey, we're on to a constable list.
I move to approve the transatable list total of one million three hundred thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Second, motion been made and seconded, um, on the motion, Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to liaison updates, obviously, there are additional.
Um, the only update I have is from the Registry of Ds office, the turtles are laying eggs. Um, and they're all excited about nature taking its course. Excited that everything's business as usual.
There's a hundred and fifty-six in the House. Um, the audit over at the jail has gone well, and they're impressed with, uh, um, a lot of the instructor we have in place. Um, so all that is good. Finance department is busy as usual. They, we have the, um, next week from yesterday is the public hearing on the budget. So, um, hopefully we'll get that wrapped up and things will move along smoothly. And, uh, over in long-term care, um, there is no COVID. We're all, uh, the new mask protocol, we're all through our mask, but that was kind of exciting. That's just moving, moving in the right direction on things. Um, there's, uh, there's a lot of money being raised for the Alzheimer's walk, uh, the Walk to End Alzheimer's. The team's raised almost two thousand dollars already. Um, and Polaris Group did completed their mock survey, which, well, they gave some good, um, good helpful insight, which will be helpful for the general survey. I, I don't know if anyone saw in the news, um, Carroll County Nursing Home was fined a hundred thousand dollars for COVID violations. Uh, so it is a reminder of what's at stake and why, you know, in terms of all the, um, policy and things that we've had in place over this duration, although it's mostly our number one priority is to keep our residents safe. There are significant financial repercussions when we cannot comply. So thank you to Jason and, um, everyone over at Long-Term Care for, and really everyone in this building for doing, you know, coming into this building for, um, having, you know, combined by all the protections in place. Because it has, uh, multiple deaths, so.
Good.
That is all.
Great. Um, I don't really have any updates in the middle of my appointments. Let's move on to quick discussion on summer schedule. I had asked, I don't put that on too good time to talk about it. In Italian, very, we typically meet as town council, we meet twice a month, but in the months of July and August, we only meet once. So I wanted to bring that up to see if Commissioner wanted to lighten up their July and August workload or, or something, something you guys want. I know that Lena has put in a request for vacation times. Um, during one of the, one of the months here, so I just thought maybe this was the time to have this discussion.
Well, historically, I will say that it is common to take a month, I mean, uh, be for too long, over the course of the summer, so it's, um, it really implementing it would be too dissimilar from what is historically done. It just hasn't been quite as formalized.
Yeah. I don't know what, why everybody does for vacation time.
I reviewed the, uh, the agendas from the past several years from the, uh, during the summer months, and they all seem pretty full. Doesn't seem like vacation time, hey? If we, if we take the big off, that's fine, but I don't, I don't I don't see the need to go every other that's mine.
I, I don't matter, I mean, I'm calling this.
Well, why don't we just then plan to take it on a piecemeal basis? If there's a week in July or in August, that seems like it's conducive. Um, then we can take it up at that point. I, you know, I will tell you, um, you know, for I have family coming in, so I might appear, um, via Zoom for a meeting or two, but so be here.
All right.
Making my, uh, smiling face over the
Right, so let's move on. So it looks like we're going to schedule, we'll just play, um, County Attorney's Office, Pat Conway, Assistant County attorney, Bernie Louie.
I move to approve hiring assistant county attorney pursuant to here, Thursday, seven thirty-three F, as recommended by the county attorney with approval from the attorney general.
Second, seconded, any discussion?
I am, uh, I know the, one of the attorneys that this attorney trained under, um, pretty well, so I think, I don't know this individual, he is, uh, maybe joining us, but, um, she was, I'm sure, well-ment, right? So, it's a good
So on the motions, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Yes. Public corrections, you're in Matt County Department, even the prisoner housing.
I move to approve the Merrimack County Department of Corrections Female Prisoner Housing Agreement for a period beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and for a one-year term as recommended by the superintendent.
Second, any discussion?
Yes, the, uh, it's just notably that the rate of, uh, that we're paying has not changed from last year, so, um, that's good.
This is just an annual thing that we have to do?
Well, we have to
Agreement?
Well, we have to do contracts because obviously we don't have female inmates, so we use contract with other process corrections to, um, to pay our females.
No, I understand that part. We've done that in the past. I was just saying, we usually typically sign a yearly contract. Is that how it works? It's just a
Merrimack County came on new last year, um, and did a one-year. They're the only ones that just don't have an open-ended contract. Everybody else we have has an open-ended contract with the same rate of pay. Merrimack's just, they prefer to do it one year at a time, bring it from other commissioners, and then then bring back to you guys. So, uh, nothing has changed. It's just they prefer to do it one year at a time.
All right, thank you. On the motion, Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Foyle?
Yes.
Out of state conference?
I move to approve an out-of-state training and travel for two Department of Corrections employees, J C and J D, to attend the FBI LE DA's managing and conducting internal affairs investigation certification course held in White River Junction, Vermont, between August fourteenth and August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at an estimated total cost of four thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second, motion been made, seconded, discussion? Uh, motion, well?
Yes.
Yes. You're a specialist.
I move to, so, print it out, um, to open it up. I move to approve the Securus Technology Services agreement. Actually, for right now, um, I am gonna move to table, but, uh, maybe we should start with discussion. I don't think I need to open it to discuss the, uh, agreement amendment.
No, we can, we can dispel it.
Let's just, and then I'll
Yeah, all right, who wants to begin?
Uh, Superintendent Henry, do you wanna give us some background and then we can lead into the
There are so Securus Technologies is one of, uh, is our phone system, um, which for years has also had the ex-jail management, or jail management system, um, that most of the county facilities in New Hampshire have had for years. Um, they were tied in together. You've done, um, eight different amendments with Securus referencing different things. So Securus basically got, is getting out of the business of having a jail management system. The jail management system we have is always been plagued with issues. Um, Securus bought this company years ago uh, and realized it was a failing endeavor because it has a lot of problems. So what they did was is Central Square came along, said, "We're happy to do and take over" "the jail management portion of the jails that they have," which is the same company that Sheriff's Department used, as I just got a contract with. Um, normally, if we went to a different, wait, rack this up, ex-jail is sunsetting by twenty twenty-five. If you were to go with a outside and just do an RFP for a jail management system, which I did look into, um, for Rockingham County is about three hundred thousand dollars. That's all data conversion and everything else, and then a yearly fee of somewhere around fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, Merrimack County just went through this endeavor over there. They chose to go with our, an outside vendor, um, different than the rest of us are going to, and they paid more than that, uh, but they used ARPA money. With this piece here, since, since, uh, Central Square be taking over, all data conversion, all the things we have like guard tour, our swipe cards, everything, well, all the integration is covered in all this at no cost. What will happen is, though, after it is all converted over, is we will have to pay a fee to keep the jail manager system around fifty thousand dollars a year, um, which is pretty standard for most jail management systems. So, the amendment on this is to have Central Square take over and then come down the road afterwards. We'd have to be looking at a fee to be able to maintain our jail management system. All the other counties in New Hampshire are switching over and have signed, already signed off onto doing the conversion. My hope is, we said it's illegal, legal had some opinions on it. Um, we sent it back to Securus. They helped have back to me today. Um, my hope is that we can sign off on this sooner or later because as they come in with the Sheriff's Department and work on their stuff, um, there's an opportunity to get this up and running faster since they're already gonna be on site.
Okay. All right, any other, we're in the discussion.
I move to table the Securus Technology Service Agreement.
Second. Undebatable, so on the motion to table, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Okay, uh, human resources amendment to the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I move to amend the March sixteen, twenty twenty-three approval to utilize category two point three five of the ARPA project fund to purchase ten gift cards for the two people who use a call in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five dollars per card.
Second, motion's been made, and seconded, is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Exception requests.
And move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash eleven for union and sworn administrative deputies in the sheriff's office, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
It's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, um, any further discussion?
This is just pro forma.
Yep. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Now, yes. Okay, next up is another exception.
I move to approve an exception request to personnel policy seven dash twelve, um, to, for unaffiliated deputies of the sheriff's office, full-time and part-time, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Made, seconded, seconded, and described. Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
Yes. Now, along some G S T music therapy.
I move to approve the Brandon's Gate Music Therapy LLC agreement for a period beginning August twenty twenty-three through August twenty twenty-four, as recommended by the senior director of long-term care services.
Second, made, and seconded, any discussion?
Only that, uh, I mean, music therapy is supposed to be wonderful for, especially for, um, people with memory care issues, and I'm so happy that we're gonna have this as another resource for our residents. It just seems like, you know, really great um, great opportunity to
May I comment, Commissioner?
Yes, ahead.
Thank you. Um, in addition to the wonderful resources, they will also be accessing our E M R system, so we'll be able to capture, um, the therapy sessions and be able to get reimbursement for that as well. So it's just a really good, um, option for not only, um, our residents receiving benefits from this kind of therapy, but also, um, from a reimbursement standpoint.
Thank you, Jason. So, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
You gotta do?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, Cal American Security updated billing rate.
I move to approve the Cal American Security Addendum and Updated Billing Rate and Orders the Sheriff's to sign all necessary documents, as recommended by the senior director of long-term
Motion's seconded, any discussion?
Yes. But, Jason, did you have a sense that this was coming down the pipeline, and are we okay budget-wise for the?
Yes, Commissioner, this, the, uh, percentage increase was added to the new budget for next fiscal year.
Fantastic.
Brother, this Not on the motion, Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gurdue?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Yeah, look at that, look, I'm defining that updates. I'm gonna start, I'm gonna style up the Sherman button since it is there, so.
Good morning. Um, continue to be busy, as always. Um, we do have a deputy retiring at the end of the month. Uh, we just gave a conditional offer to, uh, another, we'd be hiring another female officer, which is phenomenal, I think. Um, this is, we're, we're breaking history over there, which is, which is awesome. And, um, uh, as far as dispatch goes, we're still down, we've had a couple of new people come to work for us, and we're just down three. We have two in the fire right now, which we can only train two at a time anyways. Um, and otherwise than that, everything's great. Thank you.
Maybe we're definitely changing the add-along.
Uh, the drug unit has been very busy. We are conducting a lot of investigations, as we all know, along the Massachusetts border. Working with them, the system, we, and it just doesn't seem to be
But it's not slowing down.
It's not slowing down. So we just have to stay to it and hopefully, some point, the combination of enforcement, education, and, uh, treatment turn a corner on this crisis, but right now, we're still seeing, uh, record numbers.
Yeah, and I've read somewhere in paper where either Manchester National, the overall deaths have actually climbed.
You know, they just did a big bust in Manchester. They were concerned about taking the drug, the drugs off the street, and then all these people trying to buy new drugs that elasement stuff, so it's crazy.
That's unfortunate. Catherine Mann is, and I don't know if she has, she wants to add anything at all. I'll allow her to if she wants.
All right, say something.
I'm all set. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, you did.
All right, I go to Jason Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Commissioner Foyle mentioned, we had our mock survey. Overall, everything went extremely well. We have some recommendations that, um, Michelle Moreland and Smith, the Director of Nurses and myself and some other people are working on. Um, just heightening the level of, um, not a survey issue, but just, uh, from a quality assurance point of view, is taking our grievance log and doing, uh, analysis on it and doing graphs and root cause analysis and tracking and trending, um, in our spare time. So, when we find some spare time, we'll be working on all of those things. Um, in addition to that, um, we'll be, uh, working on a couple of other things regarding the, uh, mock survey, but, um, overall, everything went extremely well. Uh, let's see here, we raised money for our Alzheimer's, um, walk that we're, we're doing in, uh, early October, um, so we continue to raise funds for that. We're also gonna be hosting a seminar for the community and family members and staff if they choose to come, um, on June twentieth, we'll be doing a communication strategies for Alzheimer's caregivers, uh, program, so that'll be really nice for the community. Um, we will also, uh, let's see, excuse me, allergies are kicking in today. Our new Director of Rehab Services, uh, Aaron Sawyer, started this week, so we're happy to have him on board. In addition to that, we had a few staff members attend the New Hampshire Healthcare, uh, Long-Term Care Conference in Manchester. Uh, this Association Trade Conference that they hold every year. That was really, um, insightful, where they were able to talk with surveyors live and just talk about, uh, items that are going on insightful, where they were able to talk with surveyors live and just talk about, uh, items that are going on within the state and the struggles and the good things that are happening here. Um, we are planning for our annual family picnic due to COVID, that's kind of been held off, but we're working with the Facilities Department, Glendale Dining Services, um, for a picnic date of August seventeenth, which, um, all of you will, uh, be invited to as well. Um, the employee, um, newsletter was completed and you have a copy of that in your, uh, packet. In addition to that, just, uh, to continue, um, the item regarding Carroll County Mountain View Nursing Home, it's unfortunate. Um, but I have to say that we're very blessed to have wonderful nursing staff and leadership and, um, everyone's pitching in that come into this community to ensure that we're following the CMS guidelines, um, and they're backing off now, so we're really happy that things are lightening up and we are moving forward. In addition to that, Glendale notified me that they'll be hiring a general manager for our community, um, due to, hmm, I would say ongoing concerns, um, that they feel that it's time that they bring in, uh, someone else to, um, to help provide leadership within Glendale, so they'll be working, um, with Jason Henry and myself and supporting Brian and the other individuals that use the kitchen, meals on wheels and so forth, so, um, that will be, um, taking effect hopefully by the end of, uh, this month or beginning of next month. That's my report, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. I'm gonna go to, to Kat Conway, it looks like the sun gods have smiled upon her face. That, one.
Well, thank you. I, I think it's just the, uh, the lighting here, I'm working from here today.
Looks like you've got a really great tent.
But, um, anyway, I don't have too much to report. Thank you for approving, um, the attorney that we put forth today. She's going to be a great addition, I think, to our office. She's, she's just out of law school, um, but I was really impressed with her when we interviewed her, so I'm excited about her starting. Um, and I think that we are, we're already talking to someone else, an out-of-state attorney, to try to get her on board as well. Uh, so things are looking good in the hiring department. Um, other than that, we are, you know, we continue to prosecute and work hard. I don't know if you saw the, the news yesterday and today regarding, uh, the case we're prosecuting, where the officer was struck by a motorcycle um, in Northwood, so we had a hearing, bail hearing on that yesterday. It was nice to see folks come out and support that officer, uh, including our sheriff's department. They went to the hearing just to support the officer, so, um, we're busy prosecuting serious cases like that, but, but things are going well.
Thank you, Pat. Go to, uh, Jason Henry.
Thank you. Mona, and without the officer, I'm actually very good friends with him, so the support is very helpful, uh, to him and his family. He's a, he's a good guy. So, that being said, a couple of things going on here, um, working with medical department, um, we're probably gonna get Narcan for every officer that's here to stop wearing on their duty belt with what's been going on lately. Already have it everywhere in the units and a bunch of other places around here too already, but now we're gonna start carrying it as well. The shower project is still going very well. Um, Jude just got the, um, the, uh, epoxy, um, go ahead from the showers, so once that gets put down, this will take two weeks to cure, um, so it's moving along and it's looking great, so it's gonna be a good job. The piping in there was, is just, this was so bad, you touched it, it crumbled. That's how bad the plumbing was. It's the one, the oldest, it's the oldest part of the building that was. And so this, um, surprised it even held up as long as it has, is so bad. And, um, yesterday, myself and the major attended legal updates at Primex, uh, the wire corrections getting sued. Um, overall, it was a good training and, um, we are well ahead of the curve on some stuff because we go to advanced training outside the, outside the state, so a lot of stuff that was in there was repeat for us, so that was good. Uh, as we talked about, the audit we have here, and CCHC's been going on a week on our opioid treatment program. I met with the auditor yesterday, she was very impressed with our program, not just on the treatment side, but, um, staff side. She sees a lot around the country and, um, we go above and beyond, take it seriously, try to prevent, um, you know, people bringing back to units and that kind of stuff, where she took my name and is gonna reach out to a lot of her different places, now them call me to maybe take a look at what we're doing, um, and preventing, uh, things be brought back to the units and just how we're checking, um, and doing all our processes, so that was encouraging. Last is, Exeter Hospital has reached out to us, they're gonna sit down and have a meeting with us, uh, we've had several instances where we've had some, um, difficulties with them, uh, we're trying to get into the table, but, um, now they've decided some stuff that happened here that they're willing to sit. That would be a good meeting, be myself, um, so from the sheriff's department, our medical, and we'll, um, have a nice conversation and see if we can smooth them things out. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, Jason, on that Exeter Hospital, I thought there was big news breaking, uh, on MUR TV that they, they're going to be purchased by. Bet the, lady clinic, one of those two. Have you heard that?
No, but I'll, that'd be great.
Yeah, so.
So all of us. Sorry, I say it loud.
AG's office has approved it at the state level, so stay tuned. Seems like that's gonna get better and better over there, so. All right, Jude Gates.
Good morning, Oswell and Engineering and Maintenance, also soon to be Facilities. Um, we are very busy. We've been working on the shower project down at the jail. Jason picked a beautiful gray color for the showers to be coated in epoxy. It's all Jason.
Is that galshtick gray?
It's, um, something gray, yeah, I'm sure it'll be perfect.
Where he's going out.
I like, yeah, I don't do colors. Jason, at the, at the nursing home, we've been working with Jason's folks on, um, the upcoming dishwasher install, trying to kind of nail down connections and et cetera. It's a big, important project, so we want to make sure that it goes well. We have a, um, we're scheduling a steam shutdown for probably mid to late July, depending on survey. We have a major valve in the boiler room that's leaking by. We can take care of it when it's, when we're not in the heating season and we just need to give the nursing home advance notice because they won't have hot water for probably most of a day. Uh, an eight-hour day. So we're working on that, um, and we've been working on some mixing valve issues and blaster building for the hot water. As far as the new building goes, I've got somebody out there this morning helping to, um, bush hog the path where the silt fence is going to be installed. They need to run silt fence around the entire perimeter of the project. Double layer of fencing against the prime wetlands. They, um, we may see a bulldozer on site today or tomorrow. I don't think they'll actually be peeling back topsoil until someday next week. I will let you know as soon as I know which day that's going to be happening. Um, permits are going forward. Everything is coming together very nicely. And I think that's all I have. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jude.
Thank you.
Go to Al.
Hi, good morning, um. A little hazy here. I've been up since four o'clock yesterday, trying to get home from Las Vegas last night.
Did you win?
Uh, I did not win anything and I stayed away, um, too smoky, those areas, so I stayed away. But, um, I was amongst twenty-five thousand HR professionals, both, um, across the country and internationally. A lot of great information and stuff that's going on, on, um, you know, national platform. Um, the open enrollment was pretty intense here on Monday, had a lot of foot traffic. I actually took a few calls out in Las Vegas because the office was closed and I was seeing calls coming through, so Lisa Pieravanti and I were on a tag teaming and taking a couple of calls, try to help people through that. Out of everything, we had seventeen people that just did not do anything with open enrollment. We had some, um, another kind of handful that, uh, made some elections, but never completed their elections. And then we had a number of people that, um, on the MCU dental side, um, just had some missing forms, so I think those things are not, those to me are nonissues, the missing forms will take care of that. Um, then we had missing buyout forms, a little different issue. Um, we also had evidence of insurability, so people are making changes either to the life insurance and long-term disability. We'll take care of that because those are really nonissues. Those are just really, we gotta get those forms in, but we'll give them a week. Uh, because we have to move stuff along into the carriers too, and the carriers have deadlines as well. So they either gotta get it into us for a week, or then we just pull those benefits out of the platform for them. Uh, late forms, we had a couple that came in late. And, um, then we have a few other things, but for those that didn't complete them, I'm gonna go back. Um, we have some very three-point flyers. And so I'll have a different discussion because when we move on to the new platform that we're gonna be implementing, we are not gonna be able to open up the portal again. That, that opportunity is gone because we're doing feeds to the carriers now with the new platform, so the information will go from us and it'll feed over and those carriers have a one-time feed each open enrollment period for any company that they do. Um, we're five years into this open enrollment. We have so much communication, it's on everything, and, um, talking to my other colleagues around the state that have open enrollment, that platform's open and then it's closed, and if they don't do anything, they end up with the benefits they have from the previous year, it goes through like that. Yeah, instead of exceptions and track, because we have to track all this down, but we also have a deadline to get all this stuff into the carriers too. And it takes a lot to get it accomplished, but we'll deal with that after. We had some plan changes, um, we have about ten movements to the high deductible, ten percent OAP plan, which is a little bit higher than we would have liked, and, uh, actually, the high deductible ten percent was good, and the high deductible twenty, we had four. Our OAP plan runs a little bit higher traditionally as far as utilization. Um, I think we have the MOU that I finally got back for that one individual. It took a little time while I was out there and kept tagging them, so I have that for you this morning. And I do want to talk to you a little bit about, um, Gallagher, our benefits consultant. While I will intend to do an RFP, um, that will come to a close on June thirtieth, the contract with them. Um, but I asked for a two-month extension to allow us to do the RFP, but a little history for you, um, we've been with them for about, hmm. We've been with them since, um, I'm sorry, since twenty twelve. And from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-three, they've held their, they've held their costs for us, which is unheard of in the brokerage industry. Um, they are gonna suggest a six percent increase year one, a two percent and two percent in years two and three, which will be an increase from the fifty-one thousand to fifty-four thousand. When we went out to RFP in twenty twenty-one, twenty nineteen, um, we had a hundred and eight thousand dollar bid, an eighty-eight thousand dollar bid. We had a commission bid, meaning a commission on the numbers on the plan, and every time a change would be commission-based. So we, we don't, we're a unique population for government. Um, and if you want, I'll do an RFP, but from twenty nineteen, we had a hard time getting bidders and what their cost prices were far exceeded what Gallagher has done for us over the years. But I would put that out for discussion to the board, um.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with a bid waiver in this instance. They've been, they've served us really well. They continue in looking at that data. Um, it seems pretty reasonable. I mean, their price point seems like where we want to be, so I don't know, it obviously has to be unanimous, but I'm just, just to give you my point of reference, using the data we have from twenty twenty, coupled with inflationary rates, it seems like.
We sent the RFP out to fifteen vendors in twenty nineteen, and we only had those five that would actually fit for us.
Yeah, I, I think they're doing a good job, or else I'm in front of their, their performance. I don't have a problem with what they're asking, especially if they haven't increased anything. Over the last few years with the CPI being six last year. Projected CPI, she has four point five, so they're only asking for two in the, you know, years two and three, two percent reason, so I have no problem with that. So, but you have anything you want to add?
Uh, um, I would be in favor of keeping Gallagher. I don't think, and if we need to, uh, do a bid waiver for that, I, I see no problem with that.
I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you for that, and I appreciate that.
Anything else, Allison?
That's all I have. Did you watch the Stanley Cup out there or?
Um, I was supposed, we were supposed to go back down to the conference center, but there was so, so many people had flown in that day from out of state. I couldn't believe it. Cost for tickets, twenty-two thousand for a single seat to get in. It was hundreds of thousands of people down there. I did not, um, but we stayed at the hotel that day and just kind of viewed it, but also we hadn't really had some downtime, so we took advantage of that because it was, um, we were afraid of trying to get across, even on the buses, trying to get back, um, it was gonna be tremendously hard to. It was, it was pretty intense, but it was fun to see people doing, enjoying themselves. But, thank you.
And I'm gonna go to Katie. In case you know, Chuck's not here today.
Chuck's not here, well-deserved day off. Um, it's, everything's good in finance, business as usual. We're working on the budget. We started the new audit. So we've been working with the auditors a lot. Um, nothing really new to report.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. I'm gonna go to the level, see if we have anything she wants to broadcast.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so as we're winding down on fiscal year twenty twenty-three, I want everyone to start thinking about their annual reports, please.
Yeah.
I will send out an email probably at the middle of July. And I'm, I'm gonna say probably, um, the end of September is the due date.
Thank you very much for compiling all that. It's a ton of work too. I, you know, again, this is another job function, I'm ended up landing your lap, but compi- compiling the, uh, the whole, the countywide list is non-trivial, so thank you for your efforts in doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, just to get one more thing. The NHAC, with county stuff is, um, sorry, the NHAC nominations, the court closes tomorrow. We have to have had some activity, and I am appreciative of that, but if any other department, please let me know, if they can submit something, that would be great. Um, but it does close tomorrow, and the sooner you get it done in the morning, the sooner I'll get notified that all of our stuff has been submitted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so on, on Zoom, we have a call that came in. I don't know what it went to. And Kathy stays, okay. Kathy, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I hear you.
I, I missed you for the, for the, um, department head update. Did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, other than did, did Commissioner Goddoo tell you our big news at the D's office?
Yeah, the turtles are laying eggs.
Yeah, turtles are laying eggs. That's my, that's my report.
All right.
That's my report.
You shared that one.
Slammed my field across the street.
Very good. Is that like an annual thing that you guys?
Yes, yes, it is.
Bring those journals over here.
Okay.
No, I won't, I won't. Other than that, we're quiet.
Okay, thanks, Kate, thank you. So now onto public comment. I don't know if there's anyone in the public, they will just speak. I don't see anybody, none. Okay, let's go to, oh, I should do business on, I apologize. Anyone have new business to add? No, okay, so we'll go with that, public comment we just did. And so now we're going to make motions to go into non-public.
And I look to enter non-public percentage of ninety-one, eight, ten, three, two, L, um, considering the legal effects.
Motion made, do I have a second, um, and a motion, Commissioner Gado? Yes. Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
And I go, yes, so we're gonna be going into non-public folks. Thank you very much for your reports and keep up the good work. Thank you, everybody. I hope we're inviting the sheriff. We're gonna invite the sheriff, Major.
So we come out of non-public and we have two, we had two non-publics. On the first issue, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely because, um, divulgence of the information could affect adversely the reputation of a, an person other than a member of this board.
Second.
And with respect to, I'll just make the motion jointly, with respect to the second, um, issue, I move to seal those minutes also um, indefinitely because the divulgence of the information would likely re- render our proposed action ineffective.
Second.
All those.
Yeah, all those in favor? Any discussions?
I know, thank.
All those in favor?
I.
All right.
Thank you. And now I move to recess.
Second.
Going college.
We're in recess? Go on.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Come out of recess, and with that, I move to adjourn.
Oh, second.
We've already done that.
Okay. You need, you have to, you have to seal the minutes of non-public.
We did that.
You wasn't, you already went into public too?
So I.
So.
We did.
So motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
All right.